You gotta qualify, is that what it is?
Well, I have to play the first two tournaments without a handicap.
Oh.
I'm playing scratch, but to create a handicap.
Okay, guys, do you wanna, you wanna make this a, like a working lunch to eat while we're listening and making eat while they're presenting, or you wanna let them go for a half hour and then we can grab something to eat?
I'd rather go for a half an hour than...
Yeah, okay.
That way, while I'm eating and I'm getting food to my brain, I might have more questions to ask.
That's true. Refuel halfway through.
There you go.
And then, uh, discussion after.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything to go with that either.
Yeah.
Just leave that alone.
I think we will leave that alone.
Your buddy is not here today, so...
I know, he's gone.
No backup.
No backup.
There you go, Mayor, thank you.
Justin should be here, I don't think Tony will be here.
Yeah, I'm a little hurt, I didn't see him this morning.
Well, let's go ahead and, uh, we're gonna call this thing to order. All right, I'd like to go to order a, uh, the work session for, uh, council on May the, holy cow, 12th, uh, 2022, can I get a roll call, please?
Sure, we got, uh, councilperson Tony Abbott, he's absent, we got councilperson Justin Knopfert is absent at the present time, we got councilperson Tommy Roulette.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City attorney Dell Weldon.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, uh, the purpose of today's meeting is to discuss, um, we got a, a multitude of smaller projects that we've had some issues with on, uh, getting bid, bidders and things like that, and, uh, so, uh, Mr. Todd came forward and, uh, said, hey, we may have an option, and, uh, I'm gonna let Mario and then, uh, Mr. Jensen from Veritas Group, uh, tell us what, uh, what we can expect.
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, as the mayor stated, we're way behind getting projects off the table and out the door and having, uh, bidders look at them, first thought I had was we need help in-house, um, Tim Jensen, his group, Tim himself, been doing work for probably over 12, maybe 13 years with City Lawrenceburg, um, we had great success doing that, Tim has started his own company, which he has tons of resources, and I thought that would be a perfect, perfect marriage with the city if we could get them to, uh, help us get some of these projects up and going. And with that, Tim, you wanna kinda...
Sure.
Give them some back history, plus, uh, what services you can offer to us?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, thank you, um, everybody, again, my name's Tim, uh, so, and this is informal as you guys want it to be, so if you have questions along the way, uh, please, don't, don't be afraid to just speak out, um, hopefully we can get at least Justin here and have, uh, you know, get everybody kinda up to speed on what we're doing, briefly, though, our history, um, with Veritas, so, uh, when I started this company back in 2011, uh, my very first contract was the big building down the street, uh, so the city at the time, under Mayor Cunningham, um, and then Mr. Todd and the council at the time had enough faith in me, who I'd been working here with, with Mario and others through American Structure Point for probably five years prior to that, as an engineer and one of the main engineers, um, consistently within the city, I left to start my own firm, obviously did that project structure, with Structure Point, that project, uh, the event center and hotel, as Veritas, since then, we've grown on now, we just celebrated our 10-year anniversary last weekend, actually, um, we, we've, we've done now over, I think the numbers, $2 billion worth of owner's rep work, uh, across the state of Indiana, we now have 18 employees, um, we're growing into Michigan and some other places, so, thank you to the city of Lawrenceburg for giving us our start, um, our very first contract, two weeks after I started the company, so, um, we do have a history with Mario, um, and obviously when, when mayor was elected, there was some changeover in council as there has been over the years, Tony Abbott was actually here when, when we were here, so he would know us, but today, uh, should Mario ask me what else we can do, so, we actually focus on five key core areas all around real estate development and construction, and mainly, 98% of our work is for cities and towns across the state of Indiana, so, um, good to see you again, I think we met at, at AIM, right, so, um, so basically what we do is we have an economic development team that goes out, kind of as our forward team, that's really working with mayors and city councils and redevelopment commissions, helping them understand what they can accomplish in their city and helping them put some strategy around that as, as part of it, um, just on paper, really to understand what they're gonna go to pursue, their vision for their community, uh, we have then David's team, who David, I'm sorry, I need to introduce David and Jesse here today, so David leads our owner's rep team, David was with me when we did the, the Lawrenceburg Event Center and Hotel, and so he's got, um, history with Mario and John, um, as they, they were here back then, I know they, neither one of them looks that old enough to have been here then, but, um... Um, and then Jesse Emsweiler, newer to our team within the last year, but, um, as it comes on as a, as a project manager for David's team, um, to kinda help along with a lot of the different projects, so our community economic development team, David's owner's rep team, or our kinda third-party project management team, um, we have a site development team that really focuses on site and how to take sites from nothing to something, or redevelop sites, um, then we have a building forensics guy who you're gonna hear a little bit more about later, who, uh, he runs as our building forensics team, and then we have a facility management team, so really helping cities and towns kinda come around everything they're doing around their real estate development and construction, oftentimes around the stuff that the city themselves own, right, in order to make that stuff last longer, so we just kinda build that out, yeah.
Does everybody have the proposal in front of them?
Do you want one?
I can make, I can go back and make.
No, I got mine right here. That's where, I just had to remember why.
Do I have, I do not, do I have an email copy?
Yeah, we got an email copy on the 18th.
I can make, I can go back and make copies, I can grab someone's.
Sorry, brother.
I can pull mine up on here.
Do you have a copy?
Brett, here, if he can pull his up, look, Brett can have this one.
I gave you one.
If you wanna grab a cookie, you can go grab a cookie.
Okay, you got it.
Early, Mayor.
I got a copy, Brett's got a copy.
I didn't realize I had my email, I just pulled out it from the beginning.
I'm, I'm hungry.
So just to clarify, the proposal that you have, that is for owner's rep services, so, he's talking about all of our services, uh, this is specific to owner's rep, so, just to make that clarification.
And I think we can talk about the proposal later, or we can do it now, whatever you guys want, um, we're not here to sell you today on us, that's not the point, um, I think the point is, I, as I met with mayor and Dell, is to kinda go through a lot of the available project delivery methods and why you might choose one over another, um, we'll kinda touch base on like five or six of them today, and then at the end, we'll talk about the, the six or seven projects that, that Mario and John have given us to at least look at, to kinda consider, and how we might start to bundle those together to pursue and get more leads and more bids and more proposals, um, on, on those types of projects, so we can really, Mayor, at, at your convenience, take this however you wanna do.
I think, uh, go, go with what you, you have planned, and then, informally, just, you know, guys, got questions as you go through, speak up.
Yeah, so, we're gonna start with this kinda discussion that I do all over the state, um, for city councils, just like you guys, on what project delivery methods, how do we take a project from concept all the way through delivery to make sure it gets built and it's done right and according to statute, you, you're guys' job as council people, right, is to, to make sure that things are being done right, and you've got an attorney here who can make sure that it's being done right, and so we wanna make sure that our clients have all the information they need to make good, informed decisions, project delivery methods are just what it sounds like, how do we deliver a project from that concept or that idea all the way through the end of that project and make sure that it, it actually works and meets all those statutes, so they can be used for construction operations and maintenance, you guys are familiar with this, you guys approve contracts every day, you may not know that you're approving a delivery method as you kinda walk through that, um, but we'll talk about what the options are available to you. There's two different distinctions that I'm sure, uh, Mr. Weldon can talk you through a little bit further, one is a public work, which is what I'm sure you're very familiar with, which would be like a sidewalk, a police station, could be anything, where the consideration is primarily price, we'll get into that and what that looks like, but this is under IC Code 36112, and then you have this public purchase, which is a little bit different, right, so this could be a rent or a lease of a property, it could be you, um, renting, or advisory services, could be professional services, could be a lot of different ways, so, and this is what you might hear on RFQ, so the first one would be an RFP, request for proposal, this one would be an RFQ, request for qualification, so the main thing on a public purchase is the qualifications, for example, on a piece of real estate, does that piece of real estate meet your needs, so does it qualify and meet all that, so if you're gonna lease a property, which you guys probably don't, but if, if somebody needed to lease a property, that's what, that's what they would go through, would be the public purchase, um, instead of the public work, when we talk about proj- project delivery methods, we talk about risk, right, because really risk on every project delivery method just allocates risk differently, who's gonna be responsible for what, is it more on the contractor, is it more on the city, is it, is it more on the designer, how, how does that work, and so, really, risk is one of those things, like energy, it can't be created or destroyed, it's just gonna be moved around, right, from, from party to party contractually, so there's a set amount of risk in every project, and really, as we look at these project delivery methods, the considerations we're looking at are these things on the left, the cost, the schedule, how fast do you want this to come to market, um, how is it gonna be financed, you, you guys are in a fortunate position than in most of your projects, you're, you're writing checks, spending cash, you're not going through the bonding process, unlike other communities, uh, again, control and then that, that risk allocation, so, in Indiana State statute, there are at least these seven, um, there, there's some people who argue there's a couple more different ways to do things, but, uh, there's at least these seven very specific, uh, codes and statutes that govern how you can deliver, talking to your team and Mario and, and John, most of it has been through the first one, that design, bid, build, this is the one that we all know and have been around for, forever, it was the very first one that came out, more or less, back when the code was first codified, and then after that, they've been adding these other options going down through of what you can do, and each one of them, again, allocates risk a little bit differently, we'll talk about each one of these, not brief, not all the way through, the last two on the bottom, we're not gonna spend hardly any time on at all, other than just to mention them probably, and some of those you might be familiar with, so first, let me walk you through, so just contractually, so you can see this visually, how you guys normally do, do work, right, is you have the city or town, which is you, and city of Lawrenceburg, you hire a design team that works and kinda designs whatever the specifications are that you need, uh, for whatever the project is, and so that conclude architectural, structural, civil engineering, all those different things, and then, that team helps you guys prepare a bid document set, which you put out, you advertise and you put out on the street, and then you get this set of documents, right, or I mean, it's a price, a price proposals from multiple contractors, this is design, bid, build, this is the way it's been done for a long time, in most communities, actually across the country, not just Indiana, so, what happens here, right, is you, you have to take the lowest, most responsible bidder as, as part of the process, I don't know if this has ever happened to you, but, uh, maybe your team says, hey, or you tell the architect, we have a million dollars to do this particular project, the architect goes and designs, we get the bids back and they're at 1.5 million, right, this happens all the time across the state, this is non-stop, right, so, then we have to go back and either redesign, or we have to find more money, right, and some communities can't find more money, so they have to redesign, and who, who do you have to pay to redesign, the architect that you gave the, the budget to the first time of a million dollars, so, and in the current, in this current day and age, and one of the things that David and Jesse spend a lot of time doing is understanding the markets that we're in, because I think we all know that we're in a little bit of a crazy time, and supply chain and labor shortages and all the things that are going on are only driving costs up, I would say, we've seen personally in projects in the first quarter of this year, about an 18% rise in costs, so it's not, it's no longer the 5% annually, we've already seen more than that, um, three times that, yet this year, so, again, design, bid, build is the most common delivery system, it's got three separate phases, right, that we talked about, um, it is fixed price through a sealed bid, um, and in this case, we consider the owner's risk, your risk, very high, so, our whole point in, in this presentation today is to show you and educate you, and, and as Tom told us when he walked in, I'm here to get educated, which is great, because we're gonna teach you guys and give you some more information today that you can then start to apply in, in all of your situations, you kinda think through this, why is the risk high, like I just said, because if you come back with a bid and you, you're gonna take the lowest, most responsive bidder, number one, it may not be somebody that you like or trust, that's the lowest, most responsive bidder, um, and you're gonna be stuck with that number, or if they come in low and then they hit you with multiple change orders after that in order to build the, the price back up, it's always problematic, so we think this is a pretty risky method, especially with some of the newer methods that are available today, um, it's an established process, one of the good things is, everybody knows it, right, everybody's used to it, they're looking for it, it's cost-focused at the beginning, um, cons, again, inflexible, it takes no account into how you're financing it, and then the construction risk really is all on you, so if something changes in the middle of a project, just like we're seeing today, whether it's, I mean, we, we know that there are people who are signing purchase orders and then they're not being honored 30 days later, just because the manufacturers just can't do it, and so, how do we mitigate for those issues as we kinda think through, the next one is a newer, is a newer one, it's probably been around for about 25 years or so, is this construction manager agency, it's actually how we delivered the Lawrenceburg Event Center and Hotel, because it was really one of the only other options available at the time that we did it, and so, as we counseled, your, the council at that time, and Mario, through that process, I think we landed on this construction manager as agency, which allows, and the reason we did it was because it allows the city to hire a construction manager as a professional service outside of bidding, you don't have to bid that part, cause they're a professional service, you bring them in early in order to help price the project throughout, and, and I'm sure Mario, we all have horror stories of how many times we actually sat down and went through budgets with a building the size that's down the street, um, talking about a, you know, $30 million structure at the time, or $40 million structures, we're kinda going through it, and, just multiple budget after budget, it really helps having the construction manager there, they're giving you daily inputs on, on the cost of those, I would say, though, that, um, and in this case, though, the city still holds all of the contracts, it's still publicly bid, under Construction Management Agency Group, they're just helping you do it, so they bring that professional construction management to it, they help you bid it, and then you hold all the contracts as construction manager as agent, and I think, if I remember right, we were over 70 contracts that the city was holding for the project down the street, which is a lot, right, every subcontractor goes through, right back to the main, main deal, and really what we found, and I'm not saying this is the same everywhere, but we found was that the construction manager becomes more of a paper pusher, they're just become a administration clerical, they are managing the day-to-day in the field, but yet, when it came to a change order, they didn't really wanna jump in, they had no skin in the game, it was just kinda like, well, here's our thought, you do whatever you wanna do, we don't really care, right, and so it left it to Mario and I and David and, and others, and Carl at the time, to kinda walk through some of those issues that we were having, um, as part of that construction process, so, this allows, again, the, the upfront involvement of the construction manager, it's an agency role, still bidding, owner holds all the contracts, so again, really, you haven't shifted any risk in this case, other than maybe you're getting a little bit budget, budget numbers upfront, but you still hold the contracts, therefore, if somebody goes out of business, you have to rebid that portion, if there's a change, it's more than 20%, you still have to rebid that portion, um, and the CM, in this case, cannot self-perform anything, so, established process, everybody knows how to do this, there's a lot of CM firms that still sell just this mar- model, because they have no risk, it's a great model for them, they're never at risk in the project, they can just do whatever they want, they can push paper back and forth, and they just take their 2% or 2 and 1/2% fee, um, and this is really, we are seeing very few of these anymore, so, 25 years ago, even 10 years ago, this is really popular, in the last seven or eight years since the CMC model came on, which we'll talk about in a second, um, there's still a bunch of CMs that are pushing this model, because this is great for them, but, and as soon as the councils or the cities are educated, then the people stop using this model pretty, pretty frequently, so, again, nearly all risk is shifted to the owner, uh, you hold all the contracts, and again, no financing aspect is part of it, design, build, you guys have probably heard of this, this kinda shifts the same teams around a little bit, there's a very specific statute that walks you exactly through how you have to do this, there has to be a technical review committee, people are still doing this, this is probably more popular in the K-12 market, in the school market, than it is actually in the municipal market, but some communities are doing this, um, we did one 12 years ago, before I started Veritas, down the street, there was a, um, a design bid project, design bid, or design build project, sorry, design build project, Switzerland County, right down, down the way here, down the river, so, uh, but they did that with their city hall, I think it was, so, it, it's, it's not that common, because it's kinda cumbersome, it was, it was invented or created in order to speed up things and give a bunch of ideas, what really happens here is sort of confusing in that it's typically the construct, or construction team or contractor that is actually putting forth the proposal, and then they're holding the design team under them, um, and it's just one contract, so now you have one contract with a contractor who brings the designers on with them, but it's the process to get there that is the problem, it just takes a little bit of time, so...
That was the county building, wasn't it?
Was the county building, Switzerland County, okay, um, so you get one project and one contract with one performance guarantee typically, um, and it can be held by the designer or construction firm, typically, we see it with the construction firms, um, the contracting party hires everybody else, um, used to hold that prime contract as the municipality, and then, again, it's, this is a little less risk, however, the timeline is much longer, because of the statute and it lays out, you have to have multiple technical review committee meetings, and there has to be certain people appointed to that technical review committee, they have to present things to council on multiple, um, times, you know, throughout the process to get there, and at the end, we see this happening a lot, but again, it's mainly in the K-12 world, not much in the municipal world, um, so we have some efficiency gained, we get professionals involved early in the process, that's all good, but again, it's long and involved, and then really, we don't have a lot of risks still shifted, other than to you, so this is one of the newer ones, the construction manager as constructor, I think, came out in 2016, um, it was very, the, the state, as they always do, kinda roll it into place, they started with higher ed, so it started, I think, the very first one, I think Messer did at Purdue, um, and then they, the next year, they allowed it to, um, K-12, and the year after that, they allowed it to cities and towns, and so it just kinda rolls down as they kinda look at it to see if they need to tweak the statute at all, and we can provide the statutes if, if, um, Dell needs them at all, but we, um, I'm sure he's seen them all, so the construction manager as constructor really kinda took that CMA model and the design, build model and tried to fix it and kinda put it into one thing, on top of that, I think the construction managers realized that they were losing work to other delivery methods, and so they kinda lobbied pretty hard with some lobbyists to get this new statute put in, which Indiana was about the middle of the pack, 20th to 25th state to actually incorporate a construction manager as constructor, if you work in the market at all, you might have a construction manager at risk, it's very much the same kinda principle, in that you're gonna have one contract with the design team, one contract with the construction manager, both of those can be selected as professional services, so they don't have to be bid necessarily, um, the construction manager piece as a CMC does require an RFQ, which solid, you know, satisfies any requirement on, on the bidding side, and what's different about this is you're still gonna hold two contracts, but they're working together the whole time, and in this case, the construction manager, as opposed to the last one, where all those contracts went directly to you as the city, in this case, all the contracts go right to the construction manager, so he is at risk in this situation, so this one begins to shift risk off of the city and put it more onto the CM, uh, which is good, and there are some things that go to it, so we see it referred to as CMC, um, we, the CM assumes most of the risk by holding the contracts, this is, by statute, they have to give a guaranteed maximum price, you might hear the word GMP is also something you might hear, but they have to give a guaranteed maximum price, they can be selected outside of public bidding as a professional service, what's interesting about this is the CM can self-perform up to 20% of the work, but they still have to bid that work, so they have to be able to show that they were the low bidder, um, as part of that process, uh, which is still sort of debatable in the statute, um, and then subs can be pre-qualified by the CM and the owner, so, as the policymaking board, the council would have the right to set pre-qualification standards for the subcontractors, what's interesting about the statute is the statute does not really give any details of how that qualification or that pre-qualification should be stated, you could literally say every firm that their first name starts with a T is not allowed to bid, you, you could do that, how that would be challenged in court, likely, um, but it just, it's pretty silent on it, but you can do things that I know Lawrenceburg already does, which we did down the street, which is, hey, pre-qualify on the basis of safety record and insurance requirements and things that you would want to, to engage people on, and, and that's a process we would help, we walk through if that's what you wanted to do, um, pros of this, so there's pricing input throughout the design, just like it was before, considerable amount of risk shifts over to the CMC, um, under that GMP model, uh, oftentimes, we ask, if, if there's a set budget for a project, we ask the, the CM to give us a, the GMP early in the process, most of them will wait till after they bid the project, especially in this market, cause you just don't know what the numbers are gonna be, um, we, they wait till after they bid it the first time, and once they've got the bids all in, then they can give that guaranteed maximum price, then anything after that that changes is on them, right, they, they have to live by that number, um, one of the problems here, it's a recent addition to the toolbox, so the, the limited pool of bidders, that's growing, most of the CM firms know now how to do it, the problems that we've been seeing in the market when we have given a CMC project, or communities given a CMC project to a CM who has traditionally done CM agency, is that they don't, they're just not used to risk, and so they, they act differently, they, they behave differently, because all of a sudden, they'll say, well, you've got a change order, here you go, I'm like, no, statute says it's a GMP, it still falls under the GMP, that's yours to, to take, and like, well, that, that's not, we didn't set our contingency up, I'm like, that's not our problem, so, that's changing, they're, they're learning the game a little bit more, um, as they go through it, but it's something that we have to consider, and then, there's the political consideration of the CMC fee, because as you guys know, like, higher risk, higher reward, right, so the CMC fee typically ends up being a little bit percentage-wise higher than a CM agent, because they're assuming all that risk, so if somebody goes out bad underneath them, they're the ones that have to figure it out and go get it done, instead of you, and so they're gonna take a little bit higher fee as part of that, um, typically, they're gonna demand a little bit higher fee in order for, to compensate for that risk level, so, there's some politics there that you'd have to work through, then the most recent one, uh, that's available is this build, operate, transfer, and I know we've had some conversations with, with your attorney and, and mayor and Mario and John about this, and I think, Justin, you heard this at our, at the AIM conference when we talked about this delivery method, so this is the newest one of all of them, um, statutorily, it's actually not the newest statute, uh, the newest, the newest statute is the CMC, this has been around for a long time, but just rarely used, and there's some reasons for that, until recently, so in the last seven years, there's been over, probably about 150 projects across the state done with this statute, so it's not like it's, you're just trying something for the first time, so it, it's pretty tried and true method, but people are becoming more and more comfortable with it, um, as we progress, and so I just wanted to show you this, cause it might be an option for you as you guys look at this, but, um, what this does really is it, the build, operate, transfer kinda gets a bad name because of the build, operate, and transfer words that people use to describe it, which you don't have to do all those things as part of the statute, this is Indiana Code 523, but what happens is the city or town typically issues an RFQ or an RFP, um, as part of the process, um, they select a developer, quote-unquote developer, when I say developer, don't think about, like, the guys that are building a bunch of vinyl village homes someplace, that's not that kinda developer, it's just more of somebody who is capable of financing the project, so it could be, uh, a construction company that can also finance it, right, so they, they can do that as part of it, it could be a designer who can also finance it, so you, it really doesn't matter who that developer is, uh, unless, as long as they have the qualifications and the wherewithal to actually do it, and that developer then holds all of the design team contracts and all the construction manager contracts and guarantees a price for you, um, let's go through some of the, the, the more unique things here, so, the price is guaranteed, um, can be delivered by lump sum payment, like you guys could do in most cases, or it could be long-term financing, which some other communities choose to go the long-term financing route, based upon bonds, it allows for design, construction, operation, management, maintenance, and financing, but doesn't require it to be that way, so it really could just be pieces or parts of it, if you wanted to maintain the design independently, you could do that if you have a designer you like, or you can just dictate, use that designer, right, designer A, because we like them, they're already plugged into the project, the city can just say, we wanna use this designer, we just wrote an RFP, uh, about three months ago for a community up in northern Indiana, that already had Westler Engineering as their engineer on the project, they wanted to continue to use Westler, so the RFP basically said, Westler Engineering is the engineer of record and will be their engineer moving forward, please include Westler in any proposal that's submitted, right, so it, it, you can do really however you need to, now, um, and so the owner's risk on this actually becomes pretty low, because that developer's gonna end up taking all of the risk, um, we'll get to the Speedway story in, in just a second, but, the, uh, the difference here is that, and it, there are some, let me get to the pros here, I think it's on the other side of this little building, yeah, so, pros, the flexibility, the statute's pretty broad, the project's privately developed, so the, that shifts the construction and financing risk to the developer, and there is financing aspect, and you might say, well, we don't really need the financing, well, the financing is not where the savings really come in, the savings in this, in many cases, come in, uh, because the project is not required to be publicly bid, right, so you can literally choose a contractor through an RFP process and say, hey, here's the scope of work, we want you guys to set forth and, and give us a price, because the RFQ, RFP process at the beginning of this statute, according to the state legislature, is what satisfies the public bid process, and so now you've selected your whole team of people that you want, and they go out and get numbers, and what we have found over the years, we've been doing this for now seven years on the BOT side, is that typically, there are a lot of contractors out there who do not bid public work, they don't have time to look at the public work, they don't, they're so busy doing what they're doing, um, they, they're not gonna go pull a notice out of a newspaper, Tom, I see you shaking your head, yeah, I mean, there, there's, there's a whole group that just do not participate in public bid work, but maybe they do really good stuff, and that's why they're so busy, so maybe it makes sense that this statute can go find good people who wanna do good work for their community, and we can just say, we wanna use these guys, let's, let's negotiate this contract, um, so back on, on the Speedway project, very briefly, this is Speedway's new, uh, municipal center, David, you did this project, you wanna talk a little bit more about this?
So this was, uh, Speedway, Indiana, this is a municipal center with, uh, town services and police, and basically 40,000 square foot building, they went into this project as, with a CMA, uh, won't mention the contractor, but it was a CMA contract, uh, we came in at the very end of that process, so they had already gone through the full design, uh, they were getting ready, they actually had put it out to bid, it came in over a million dollars over budget, which typically, like he had said before, you go through these processes where you design upfront, it goes out for bid, uh, and then it came in over budget, so, we went through the typical steps when things come in over budget like that, looked at VE items and, and what could we cut out of the project, value engineering, and, you know, it, once it's hard bid, it's hard to get that number down, uh, always, uh, and the only way you can really get that number down is to take square footage out of the building, well, there wasn't much square, there wasn't any square footage to take out of that building.
It was an existing building.
It was an existing building, right, so it's, it's an adaptive reuse, so, we looked at, okay, so what do we, how do we get through this thing, so we actually declined all bids, and we shifted gears and put an RFP out for a BOT, had that BOT come in, and basically it gave us the ability to, uh, negotiate that, so in, in some cases, that original contractor that was on as CMC, or CMA, rather, stayed on with the on with the developer. Some of those same contractors came on with that CM, and we were able to negotiate those fees down. We saved them a million dollars and got the project back on budget and delivered it. So ended up being a great success for Speedway, and it just kind of shows you, I get the question, well, how do you cut that much scope out, how do you cut that much cost out of a project just by switching delivery? Some of that was negotiation with those contractors. Then another part of that actually is when you go out for public bid versus privately negotiating contracts, it's a completely different scenario. So prices on the design bid or on the public side are much higher typically than you would have on a public bid or a private bid rather. So that makes sense. It ended up being a great project, and now it's just one example.
Yeah, we're almost done here, so I know you guys are hungry, you can see it in your eyes. All right, so again, the cons here on the BOT is there's a pretty limited bidder pool. This is growing, we're seeing this happen more and more across the state. So, you know, five years ago, there was one or two different developers that were looking and pursuing these projects. Oh, John, I lost it. Oh. Hang on. Let me find it, John. Make me recast this, I think. So we're walking through this process, and there's just, there's more and more people getting on board with this. John, it's not working, but it's all right. Yeah, we can flip through the rest of it. So there's, I think there's only a couple more pages left. Is it? That's not my picture though, so.
You don't have a frog on your computer?
It's not my kids, sorry, I don't know. All right. Yeah, so we're just down to the very end here. So really, what we wanted to say in conclusion, right, is that there's, we went through five of the seven different project delivery methods that are readily available to you. The other two are the guaranteed energy savings contracts, which you may have done a few of. I don't know if you guys ever done guaranteed energy savings. Guaranteed energy savings are fine, but they can't be used on new capital projects like a new building or anything. They can only be done on retrofits and/or things that will improve your energy costs, because the contractors that do that finance it on the back of the energy savings that you're using. They tell you what that is, they guarantee it, and they take that money, and then they build off of that. Then the other one is integrated project delivery, which is really for projects that are about 500 million and up. Indianapolis has only done one of them, which was the Eskenazi Hospital several years ago, where they kind of put together an IPD arrangement with the contractors and the designers, and everybody got together, and the city was a big part of that. So if the city's going to be an owner in a project like that with multiple parties' ownership, then they have to use the IPD delivery model. But again, not applicable to small cities and towns throughout the state of Indiana. So really, there's a lot of them. There's not one size fits all. We're not here to push one idea on you over another one. There's not one that's a silver bullet that's going to fix everything. We know, we've talked to Mario and John and the mayor and Dell, and have heard some stories about, hey, we never got any bids on this project, or it would be nice if we could do this over here. We think we can help with that, but again, there's not necessarily one project delivery method that's going to solve that issue, right? Because even if the project's too small, for some people, it's going to be too small. And so how do we look at bundling some stuff together? The project delivery method should be chosen by your team or your whole team based upon your level of risk tolerance that you really want to pursue, and are we comfortable with this? Our job is to inform you of what's available, and your job as policymakers is to represent your people and do what you think is best for the city. So we're just here to execute whatever you determine is appropriate. So if you say, we want to use that delivery method, then we'll push that one forward and we'll do it. So we're not here to do that. And if you don't know the answer to a question, feel free to call us and ask us. I think I've given everybody my card, if you don't have it, I'll give it to you. It's on our proposal too, but you can call us and ask us anytime. We want to be value-add to your community, as we were 10 years ago, 12 years ago, when we started the project down the street. Call us. I think you can talk to any councilman at the time, maybe minus one, who would say, we worked through everything with you. I mean, we'd meet on the side, we'd come, go to breakfast or lunch, and just kind of talk through what's available, what are the opportunities, how do you do this better? Because I think, deep down, everybody wants to do their job better. We all want to be better, all right? We want to be better mayors, we want to be better construction managers, we want to be better council people. We want to learn how to do things differently and push our communities forward. And I think I find that across the state. And there are newer things than what you're doing today. Doesn't mean that what you're doing today is not the best method, because in many cases it might be. But there are also new things that I think we should consider. So we actually have another slide. David, if you want to start talking about this, I will see if I can get it back up on the screen for him.
Tim, real quick, on the BOT, can we tell the council, the board that basically that's a finance component more than anything? We wouldn't be used or needing, you know?
So, yeah, you don't have to use the financing component necessarily on that BOT. I mean, the statute is very flexible in that. I think the main benefit of the BOT in this case is the delivery and how we get that delivered, and having that developer onboard and the flexibility. So when you look at the different projects, what it allows us to do, let me get that on the proposal, because I listed there.
Can I, I want to do this, though. The thing that I probably, that I don't particularly care for in the BOT is I think it's less transparent. And when I say that, because you have the option, you can choose whatever group you want to choose to do the project, right? Where I like the, I think the CMC.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good luck keeping up with all this.
What's that? What's that?
Construction manager as constructor.
I said, good luck keeping up with all them.
The CMC, because I just, I think it's a, I like the idea of, you know, it's a moderate risk, I think, if I remember. But it also is the construction manager piece, you know, we're still going to do the public opening of bids.
Right.
And that's what's something we've really tried really hard here to do the last, I know, seven years, is to be out in the open with everything we can. And to me, that just creates that.
So I, to step in if you don't think differently, but I would suggest and say that, I'll say this here, and then I want to back up a little bit on something I wanted to close out with, but I think we can craft that RFP and deliver a BOT and still maintain that transparency that you want to have. So we're going to do that in the RFP, and we're going to bring on those developers, and they have to go through that qualifications, and depending on what we have, if we have drawings, we can even have them provide some pricing that we can pair during that. And when they actually put it out for hard bid, we can require them, and we would require them, to put that out for bid and get multiple bids. And we could make that a transparent, open book process that I think could satisfy what your concern is there, and so it does.
It could be even more competitive.
Right.
Because as it stands now, a lot of our contractors don't necessarily show the subs or those units the subs are working under.
Right.
Where this, he's asked to say, we mandate that, that's part of it.
But if there's not the financing piece of the BOT, really, it's just a B, right?
Could be a B.
Yes.
BOT, you're going to build and transfer.
Yeah, exactly, for sure.
Would that be open in on that? It wouldn't, or would?
Would not be open in.
Yeah, not open.
No, would not be open in. It'd be, there'd be a very set date of time when the project's completed that it's true.
And money?
Yeah, time and money. They have to give, according to the statute, they have to give you a guaranteed maximum price on the BOT. They're taking all that risk as well.
Can you, Mario, could you, and we can use these projects as an example, let's say the Lawrenceburg Community Center facade. How would we have done that project five years ago? Let's say the market's better, you guys are less busy, Veritas isn't involved. Walk us through just from soup to nuts, how we would do that project? We, start with, we recognize the facade needs an improvement.
We went out, first of all, found an architect.
Okay.
And engaged them, had them look at it, they'd have ran some renderings by us that say yes, no, what have you. We'd brought that back to the board to say, we like this, let's go for this. They had prepared all the documents, put it out the bid for us, and basically, that's what we had.
And we'd choose the low bidder, as long as they're responsible.
Well, the most responsive bidder.
We would pre-qualify them as we do.
Correct.
So, and then they would start the project with the budget being the bid.
Correct. And we would, first the backup, we'd establish either we're doing a lump sum or has, you know, break down units on that particular project.
And is that, is that process basically true for everything that you guys do around town that doesn't get to a certain level?
At a certain dollar amount, yes.
So would you view all of these projects, the seven, six projects, and then kind of the seventh category as miscellaneous as falling into that general process? That was always done for everything like that?
But in saying that, there's different disciplines of the design professionals. Of course, the architects, the structural engineers, you know, mechanical engineers for different projects.
Are we having more trouble finding design professionals or more trouble finding construction managers?
Both, both.
Finding bidders.
And not to get confused with the construction manager, I mean, you know, as owners rep, they're somewhat our construction managers, but they're actually actually seeking, you know, those other design professionals, you know, the mechanical folks, the architects, the, the people that actually do the nuts and bolts for the job.
And this is just, you know, this is so we all can, and some of you guys are more advanced than others, but so that everyone in the room knows how we do these projects. It's not a mystery, I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
We've been doing projects like this for 100 years, we'll do them for another 100 years.
The only thing is, you know, the world changed here probably the last four or five years, you know? Even pre-COVID, we started seeing, you know, hard time getting design professionals to do smaller crafted jobs such as, well, the facade. That's really not a big job in the big scheme of things. But if you want a big finish or big contractor to do a job like it, you know, it's going to take folks like this to go find them.
What helps us, what helps us the most? I mean, if we had, let's say, in a perfect world, we had just an amazing design professional that always gave us a great architect's estimate or engineer's estimate, did great drawings, that gave us our best shot at the most bidders and the best, and the tightest price that we don't have to bunch of change orders for. Is that, is that problem A, or is, are they both equal, I guess, in the sense that we, sometimes we have a good design, sometimes we don't, sometimes we have no bids, sometimes we have some bids, but we don't always have great bids? What problem were you trying to solve?
Well, it's kind of like a percentage of all of the above. You know, first, I'd like to find a good architect and/or engineer to work with. Second of all, is the market itself. Said timing-wise, that we need to go first of April to do a project, or towards any year where contractors are wrapping up, looking to be more competitive for the following year. We don't have time to sit behind the desk all day long trying to figure those pieces out.
And that's, and that's clear, and I mean, that's why we're here, because we have a backlog of these projects. But is it, would it be fair to say that if we had, on all seven of these projects, maybe, or maybe they're 10 or 12, you know, that seven categories?
Well, and we just kind of picked, you know, I don't want to say Neil and Willie just picked these out, these are some.
There's more.
Yes.
Yeah, but I mean, let's say for these six that are specifically listed, we had great drawings already, or great plans already. We solved problem A, and we're, right now, in your office, in John's office, we've got these designed well, we're comfortable with the design, we're comfortable with the engineer architect's estimate, we're comfortable that these projects are in the budget. If we, if we take that off the table, now we're just focusing on bidding, right? And then?
And that's again, timing, because, you know, remember, timing has value to it also.
What do you mean by that? Like, how long it takes us to get it designed?
Well, I mean, they're not just going to take a sheet, say, Mario, we're going to put that community center out to bid probably in May. You know, there's, you've got to work your way through that schedule to get it out there on bidding.
Yeah, that's, I was just kind of curious, Mario explained the process just for, you know, the community center. So this is what we did five years ago, whatever. So how would you guys do that process? What would you do for this? How would you guys go about, what would you do different than what we do?
If you were looking at these six projects?
Yep. I mean, just take one of them.
Just use the community center, and let's say we.
We want, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we gather by using folks like, like Veritas.
But they're still going to have to do something with this community center, so how would you do just that part?
What I'm saying, though, is if we only had one project to worry about, it wouldn't be so bad.
Oh, yeah, we'd do it, we'd do it in-house.
Well, I think, and that's just from talking to Mario and the group. This is my opinion. I think what we gather from using somebody to look at this multitude of projects at one time, we can maybe get three or four of the projects going at a time.
Same time.
At the same time, where now we don't have that luxury.
With them being the overseer of the project.
Yes.
Everyone.
But I like, I like what Mark's saying, and I think that's a good segue from our conversation with Mario, and let's stay with just the community center. Now, is the community center, and I know that's just picking one out, but is it, is it a product, is it a product of not having a good designer, is it a product that we put it out for bid and we got no bidders, or is it a product of we put it out for bid and we're not happy?
Use a different project.
Or any project.
Use the Tanner's Creek.
Let's finish up with this one. If we put the community center, use that, first of all, we need a design. How long does it take for typical architect design?
Depends on the project, it'd take up six months potentially, if it's a large project, so.
So again, there's the timing component I'm talking about.
But if, again, if we have, if we get past that, and now we're just, now we're post-design, then what is the issue for that project? We just couldn't find any bidders, or we weren't happy with the bids we got? Because of the market?
That's hypothetical at this point.
Yeah, but that, I think this is a good hypothetical, because it's, how do we currently do it? Take a project, and then, since we're at an impasse with a project like that, or pick any of the six, really?
Well, no, you're right.
And then what would they do differently?
You're right.
That's the process.
Here's a good case in point, we've rebid one project already, Downey Road, that storm over there. And rebid, and it's a grant project. So there's some certain guidelines we had to go by.
Well, when we rebid that, you cut things out of it as well, right?
Well, we had to, to get the cost out of it.
Get the cost, okay.
Yeah, we kind of value engineered that wet side out of that project.
Right, okay.
So we went from having this thing bid out, it was the first year, last year, we're going to go, had to back it up for redesign. So there was almost eight months there.
It's just dropping the wifi connection.
In doing that, you know, we probably lost, you know, construction time, but we probably gained cost-wise.
Oh, yes.
You know, almost 30%, 40% cost-wise in this thing. Now we've lost, well, case in point, the generator. It went from, I think, eight weeks lead time to 14 months for a generator for that project.
I've got one at 24 months on lead time right now, so.
So let's, and let's take that as an example, but let's shift just one step, we'll make it a hypothetical, so we don't get into a real project. But, you know, we've got a construction project, it's grant-based, we've designed it, we've bid it out once, we had to reject the bids, it was above our budget, we redesigned it, We had to reject the bids. It was above our budget. We redesigned it. Well, this is.
Well, just saying, it must be practical. It wasn't above the, we couldn't afford it, it's that we had nobody bid it.
Yeah, nobody bid it. So if I may jump in real quick.
Do differently.
Yeah, so you have a proposal for you, all of you have a proposal for us right now. That proposal is really only for scoping. So it's, uh, it's phases one through three for eighty thousand five hundred hourly not to exceed. Nothing about delivery, nothing about B O T, C N C, C M A, anything. So if you go up and you look at our project approach, so phase one, visioning, due diligence, team development. Team development is determining how are we going to put this project together and then conceptual design. And some of it, we already have a conceptual design on. Phase two, schematic and design development. By that time, we have an architect on board, uh, designing. Phase three, construction documents and bidding. Phase four, construction. Phase five, commissioning and closeout. That process for us, that doesn't change no matter if we're doing a C M A, C M C, B O T. It doesn't change. Now, it might modify a little bit. You might already have visioning done or due diligence done, and we're just coming in and helping.
Problem with a particular project is that no one.
So.
How do you?
Exactly. So now we're coming in, so we've, we've talked with Mario and we understand that nobody's bid the project. So we have to get creative. Everybody's busy out there. So how do we, how do we get somebody enticed to come and do the community center facade rehab? Or, or the data center improvements and just do that one small project? That could be tough in this bidding market. So what we can do, and this is what, this is how this whole thing started, was talking about the B O T and how we could bundle these projects up. So if you look at the screens here, what the B O T would allow us to do is to bring one developer in and we could package these projects up. And let's look at number two, for example.
Developer.
Through an R F Q process.
I know, but how do you pick them after that?
We have interviews. We'll interview each one of them. So if we have one, two, three, uh, respondents, we would, we would interview all of those. And it would be qualifications based. If we had drawings, we could even have them provide a ruffled magnitude and we could.
How do you create the pool? How do you, when you advertise the R F Q, you're advertising it generally?
Public notice.
For the statute, but you're also sending it to people that you know.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
Pool look like? Is it three states?
I'd say there's five or six.
Five or six Indian.
Yeah, that are really doing it, that are really doing it well and know how to do it.
Five or six what? Excuse me?
Developers.
Developers, teams, companies, architectural firms, developers, uh, contractors that know how to do this.
And, and I would say too, that just because we grouped them here, I think you could use the C M C model and, and group them as well.
Yep.
So I mean, if that's something that's more comfortable to the mayor and council, that's okay. Again, we're not pushing this. We were asked how we would do it differently. If I got, if I got put in a, in a bag, like maybe a trick bag like this, is be like, hey, number one up here, these are three things that are all very sma- smaller, right? They're not one single project that's huge. They're all, but they're all building related. They're all vertical construction related. So we would bun- bundle similar contracts and similar projects into these things. If you look at the, the bundle of number two, and the third one, the boat dock's a little bit different, but the trail rehab, the walking and bike connecting, you know, connector project, they're all more horizontal projects, meaning that they're on the ground, whether it's concrete or asphalt or site amenities or some kind of. So they're, those would be similar contracts. And the boat dock even, if you found the right group, could probably bundle everything in one thing and kind of knock out all of it at the same time. We save design time. We save design headaches. If you have three designers doing three different things, if you have one designer doing all three things, right? So you're having one meeting with one design firm, getting all the plans and specifications put together and kind of building this out again. But you can do it C M C or B O T, those would be the two that I would look at in all these cases, um, to see which one's going to serve you better. But again, it comes down to what risk you guys are willing to take. In both cases, they should be giving you G M Ps on them, so it really shouldn't be that much different. Except for the one is certainly a public, very public bid, where the other one is more of a, let's go get three quotes from several different contractors. Still open book. You're going to see everything. Um, and then you guys, as the policymakers, get to make that final selection at the end of the day. So.
Mayor, you asked a question a little while ago. What, how would you, how would you do it? What would you do to deliver these projects? And in this, you brought me flowers, Mario?
I'm sucking up right now.
What? What is this?
Wow.
Taking a picture.
Take a picture.
Yeah, I wonder if she does, do you?
Everyone does now. Are we filming this?
They're not from us, just to be clear.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't send you flowers.
Thanks, guys and gals.
I would call it a perk.
It says city of Lawrenceburg in there, Malons.
I mean, going back, this, this all really, really sounds good. I mean, it does. And it almost seems like it's the best process in all these different acronyms or whatnot. I'm going to have to get educated. But it just, I don't know, I, I, it just sounds like we're, it's like we're going around something to get it done quicker and, and we'll.
Like which one, Tom? On the B O T one?
Just any of them in, in, in general. I mean, I, I'm going to go back and figure out how them all work because I see how you put things in categories, but I couldn't keep up with.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're good, you're good.
The presentation.
I told you from, what I tell you from the beginning, it's going to be a learning process. If I want to know what's going on, I might have to learn.
That's right.
So.
So, so look at us, they're still going to be, no matter which one you use, they're going to be the owner's rep. They're gonna, they're gonna help our staff be, be larger.
Right. Well, no, the owner's rep would be you guys, right?
Right.
That's, that, that's.
We are, we are an independent, third party. We, we work directly for you. We're not a C M, we're not an architect, we're not doing. Okay.
Where, where this all really started, Mario and I, uh, we have a project, a project meeting. We start scheduling these for, you know, hey, where are you at on this, 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 this? And it got to the point, and then I think it brought, brought it to the head when we couldn't get any, any bidders on the boat dock expansion.
Expansion.
Uh, down at Tanner's Creek. Um, and I said, well, what, what can we do to these smaller projects? To get these things, a quick kick, quick kick in the can down the road and, and get them done.
Cause you know, we've absorbed that cost to that point, designing.
It's, it's costing us more money. So he, actually, I think, either reached out to Tim, or I don't know how that happened. But then, then, then Tim came in, and that's where, that's why we're here today.
Yep.
But I want, you got, you guys have got to ask your questions. I, I feel, I, I, I know how I feel about it. I just, I want the projects done. I'm impatient, you know, and I know, Tommy, you're a lot like me.
Want them done, yes.
But, but it's, I just want to, you know, and as long, here's, here's my take on it. I, I'm, I'm good, as long as we stick to the transparency that we've committed to in, in, in our way we do things. On our projects, on anything we do, I, I want to just move these things forward however we choose to do it. You know, but it's, it's obviously the old way on these particular projects that we've identified are not working. At this, at this time of the market.
Yeah. I got a few questions. I, and of course, I'm the clerk treasurer, just trying to look at some numbers and stuff here. But, um, in, in the process of, how would you, do you work direct, would you work through Mario? As far as all these vendors and everything, are you on site? Sure, I can explain it. I mean, when you come down and you check these projects, of course, I know there's mileage on the second page, not to exceed, whatever, I don't know. Uh, you got a two B D on the construction and through closeouts.
Yep.
What kind of numbers are we looking at? Say, just the community center, what type of numbers would be looking ju- from, just from you? I know that we've. Right. The construction people that we had to pay individually. And like I said, how do these, like, I know, like Mario, when we start a project, Mario has a lot of relationship with our office. I mean, he's constantly bringing invoices from different people, you know, he has to sign off of it. So my question is, who signs off on this thing? Is, is it going to be you guys to sign off or is you going to go through Mario to sign off on all these? Sure. Can you help me out? So with us being involved, so with us being involved as the owner's rep, so that first fee is really just to kind of get us through scoping, so we can identify what the project. I don't, I don't know if we're talking about a five hundred thousand dollar project or a twenty million dollar project. And we're still paying for all the design products. Absolutely. I mean, anybody that we go out to do the architect or whatever, we're going to be paying for that individually anyway. Absolutely, right. So this first fee is just to get us through scoping so we can identify what the project is. Once we identify that, then we can go ahead, we can proceed forward. And what we would prefer to do is give you a fixed fee, that way you know exactly what you're paying for us. Our fee never changes. If the pro- cost of the project goes up, there's a change order, our fee doesn't go up like what a C M or an architect charging a percent base would. Our fee is always the same. And that's, you know, a little bit of the transparent, like the mayor said. I mean, that would be something that we would definitely want out there. Yep. I want to put, you know, everything that we have in our office is pretty much. Right. Put out there to the public. Yep. And we would negotiate that fee with you and we look at, typically, it's around two percent of the project cost. That goes up and down depending on the size of the project. So we, but we would negotiate all that with you and everybody would be on board with it. And we would, we'd finalize that, that last part of the contract to get you through all of that. As far as what we do, so when we're involved, we're working hand in hand with Mario. So we work for the city, we work with Mario, we're accountable to Mario. When those projects come in, we're taking them all the way through design, procurement, through construction, through post-construction. When we get a pay application, we're taking that off of his plate. We're vetting all of that, we're reviewing it. If there's questions to be asked, we're asking them ahead of time. If there's change orders that come across the table, we're looking at those and making sure these valid change orders, are they, should they have been captured in design? Should the C M should have captured those? Or is it truly an owner change? Did we change something? And then I give all that information to Mario and say, here's the change order, here's the pay application, here's our recommendation, this is good, Mario. It takes all that off his plate. And that's what, that's what he needs, from what I understand. He's got a lot on his plate.
So in saying that, you know, of course, I'm out in the field. Um, and if I see something, it may be a design flaw that's caused or made something happen, I'll go back to these guys, say, hey, I think we got some errors and omissions we had to address here.
Yep.
Well, they've got the, I'm sorry.
You would, you would be just our eyes on the ground.
Yep.
As well as us. We'd be out there too.
But the accountability from this construction manager, the C M, would, would fa- would fall to you because you're out there, but then also directly to you as our owner rep.
Isn't that duplicating? I mean, this phase four to five, we've already got Mario, so we wouldn't necessarily need.
So.
Construction through closeout, Mario's doing that, right?
So, well, many times, we're, we're acting as, we're basically augmenting his staff.
Yeah, keep in, keep in mind, you know, they're going through, say, the documents, A I documents that have our units on it. They're going through all those units also to make sure that, you know, everything adds up.
Counterpoint.
Yes.
Yep.
How much does that, how much does that cost?
It, we haven't given you a price on that.
We haven't given you.
But what is it? Like, say, the project's a five, a hundred thousand dollars. So two percent of the project cost?
Is the whole fee typically, between two and.
But plus the eighty-five, eighty thousand five hundred plus the not to exceed fifteen thousand, plus the two percent of the project. Is that right?
I followed that, but yeah, David, you're not.
Yeah, you, I think you had, you have our scoping fee.
It says phase one through three, eighty thousand five hundred. Then it says not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars in reimbursable expenses. Then it says phase four through five, construction through closeout. You're saying that's two percent of the project.
Roughly.
Roughly, to be negotiated.
Well, if it's only, the project's only fifty thousand, you know, it's going to be probably a little more than two percent.
I can, I can tell you that right now. So some projects we have that I'm working on are five million dollar projects or even less than that. I've also got a hundred and twenty million dollar project and I'm looking at a, almost a two hundred million dollar project. I can't charge a two percent fee on a two hundred million dollar project.
I'd like to.
Love to.
Yeah.
He's saying I'd love to, but so that's where I say it's got to be negotiated.
And the other thing that, that affects the fee is are we bundling projects or not bundling projects? If I'm doing six or seven different projects, then we've got six or seven different document sets, different, different architects, engineers, et cetera. If I'm bundling, then I get to, you guys achieve that same economy of scale by, by saying, okay, take, take these three and squish them together. Now we're down here one time for the same meeting for three projects.
Why do we need to do this now? How have we survived for thirty years without fairness group?
How many times has COVID hit in the last lifetime?
But I mean, is that the only reason?
Well, something changed the world here in the last, you know, three or four.
Well, did you have this happening like oh seven, oh eight, when things were so silly back then? I mean, because everything was booming, it was hard to get contractors, you know, subcontractors. I mean, did you have a similar?
We really never did have, you know, had to reach for contractors to do work.
But again, I mean, we're not talking about just not having people bid. We're talking about paying them to.
Well, you gotta have design professionals to even do it. We're having problems getting, getting those folks.
Okay.
Right now, case in point, and I mentioned, we got a local firm that's doing a lot of our stuff right now. We've got them so swamped.
Yeah.
We had council meeting yesterday because they don't have all the information to come back to us to have a meeting. And they've been working on it, I'm going to say for what, three months now?
Three months. I had an applicant come in today that couldn't get a survey. It used to be four weeks out, they're now six months out.
And they sued us.
So at some point, go ahead, Tommy. I'm sorry.
No, you.
So the, these are, I, I don't mean to say it this way, these are not really dire needs to get done. These are visions that we want to get done.
Keep in mind, you know, you're, you're sort of the city money here.
I, I get that.
So we're wasting money not doing these projects and getting them off the table. Cause some of these projects, we've already spent to date, you know, X amount of dollars on.
Well, see, and some of that we're not aware of as council or learnings would go. I mean, the first time I knew that we were going to do something to the facade is when I received this, you know what I mean? I wasn't aware of these, some of these projects ongoing. I knew the elected department.
Well, some of the stuff is in, you remember, is in the Capitol. So if you look.
Okay, and that's probably where I need to educate myself. Right, right.
So Mayor, I want to go back to your question one more time. So you asked, how would you do this? In today's market, with the supply chain that we have, with the increased costs that we have every day, with the inflation that we have, there's no way, use us or not, there's no way I would go into a project right now without having a collaborative team between your design and construction, working together to design and price. So that when you come out of a project, you have a guaranteed maximum price with no change orders. Use us or not, that's what I'd recommend.
Yeah, but your market's the same as ours.
So.
I mean, your, your, your market challenges are the same as ours.
Yep, yep, yep. And then.
We, we know about contingencies.
Sure.
Here's a good point, Mike Clark. Mike has done this stuff for, forever. The Downey Road job, they forgot to negotiate in the admin side of the services for the engineering. I think Board of Works just approved additional.
Phase two.
Yes.
Yes, yes, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's kind of things that, like, these folks.
They would see.
Yes.
They would catch.
And if we had a G M P, that wouldn't be on us.
Yeah.
From, from.
I, I, yeah.
No, I'm not, and I'm sorry, I'm answering some of your questions.
But no, I'm just trying to give examples.
I'm not, no, and I'm not, I'm not anti this. I'm, I'm kind of learning, I'm thinking about this as we're talking about it.
Anti-owner's rep or anti-delivery?
Well, I mean, I think what the mayor said is, is the key here. What are our goals as a city? What's important to us, which, because we're not a private company. So we have to, we have to stack our goals and we have to be good stewards, like Mario said, but we have to accomplish all our goals and, and keep those at the forefront. You know, when we're doing a project, what's important to us as a city government rather than a private company? But I think there's a solution here and I think it needs to be talked about. This is something that's been, that kind of always, like Tommy said, is all, it always seems like it's a separate part of what we do, but it's really a key part of what we do and we can do it together and we can do it better, I think.
So the last thing I'd say is, we just want to be a value. We, we want to, that's, that's, we have to be a value to you. And if we're not a value, then we probably don't have a place here. But I can tell you, we work across thirty-four different counties and we have almost three-quarter billion dollars worth of work we're doing across the state of Indiana and all those municipalities. We are showing some kind of value in all those areas, in all those, to all those communities. Uh, whether it's just to augment their staff or actually showing true savings to their projects. And we can show you case studies for that. So that's really, I think, I have no question in my mind that, that our team could come on board and augment Mario's staff and help deliver great projects for city Lawrenceburg.
As we contract with you guys in different processes, say that, you know, there's, you have these, these bundled projects together and there's three different scopes. So say there's another one that we want to throw in on one of those bundles, how's that, how, how's that change with your scope? You know, of your engagement with us?
Oh, David, David and Jesse would sit down with Mario and John and figure out what that additional time would be. It may not be any additional time. If we're going to use the same architect and it's going to be, we're down here while we're visiting, it may not be an added fee. Um, it just depends on what it, what the change is. I mean, if you said, hey, we're going to go do these three building projects, but we want to add this storm sewer project way over here, that's, that's a little bit different discussion. One thing we did really mention too, and Mario started leaning into this, is we have a licensed architect on our staff. We have a licensed landscape architect on our staff. We have licensed civil engineers on our staff. So all these projects are getting vetted through the design process. We're not designing them, but we're taking our experts and we're looking at all of them. We have a guy who pretty much does for a living building facades. That's, that's his job. He travels all over the country inspecting building facades. He'll be the first guy that's down here looking at the facade of the community center, right, as they're designing and as they're going through that process. So we can help satisfy a lot of the technical side. I'll take you back twelve years ago, whatever it was, when Mario and I started talking, probably longer than that. Started talking about the, the event center and hotel with the previous administration in the city. The reason they brought us on then was because Mario had a full-time job that was obviously more than full-time, going around doing everything else. And all of a sudden, we're going to embark on a forty to fifty million dollar project that, that was outside of the norm of what they do every day in business. So that's one reason why you might bring somebody like us on. The second reason is, hey, we're struggling in the market to even get responses. Well, the other thing we can do is, and Dell made this comment, was that our market conditions are the same as your market conditions. True, but they're also different markets. Like, we bring a whole Indianapolis bevy of individuals, right? We have contacts in Cincinnati that, that are, that are huge. So when we send out a list to architects, it's going to forty-five or fifty different architects looking for somebody to say, hey, I've got time in my, in my day to do this. He sends his list out, he's probably got four or five local people that he's looking at, right, that he's, that he's trying to perceive. So, you know, especially on these smaller ones. So we, when we have that smaller list, we have a whole, we have a whole database full of designers and developers and contractors and people who are interested in this market. This market is probably more similar to the Cincinnati market than it is Indianapolis market because it's closer. But we also have similar lists in Cincinnati that we're developing over time. So we think, and part of the conversation we had with, with the mayor was we, we could potentially spread out this a little bit, at least to get, gather interest. Not that you wouldn't still want to use local whenever you can. But it's really just understanding how do we get the biggest exposure so we get the best pricing and the best talent doing the work within our community. So.
So the monies that we see in front of us, eighty thousand five, that's basically just like a vision through the construction. It's just like initiation. Once you start looking into the projects, that's when you, we're going to see the monies that are being spent with you guys, through you guys.
Yeah, and that's an hourly not to exceed.
Yeah.
We may come to the conclusion of the project in, within twenty minutes, I don't know.
So when, if we accept this, we will have documentation showing your rates and things.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So if I wanted to.
So if I wanted to follow along like my checkbook, I could, you know what I mean?
And our invoices are.
Okay, this really is working. We're not really going outside the scope spending more what we would if we went the other way.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yep, that's correct. Yep.
I mean, I think, Rob, I think, you know, our reach, what through them is, is going to provide a lot of savings. Now, I, I, I keep hearing the, you keep talking about the events there, and I, I just, all the processes through that I've heard, and just being only a public official for a few years now, two and a half years. I just haven't heard a good thing about that process. So when you keep bringing that up, it's like, oh, it's like, I saw the ones and everything, I was like, this is a thirty-five million dollar project that costs fifty million. That's all, that's all it keeps.
You're like.
If, if you want the true story, I'm happy to take you to lunch.
I would advise not.
We should do that over there. Yes, I, I think that was, there was some of that was a dumpster fire.
Your PR team.
We had this beautiful facility and it's there.
That's right, that's right.
Walk, exactly.
Yeah, maybe that, that's not the best thing to bring up.
But those waters were not all a problem with us.
So, so all I could think of is like, and I, and I do see value in what you guys provide, absolutely, as, as a general contractor myself, you know, I deal with this every day. But, um, so I, I, I see, I see the value that you guys can provide, and I, I do think that long-term, this is going to provide a savings for, for our, for our community.
Well, and I think the biggest scare is the dollars. I think Tommy's concerned like, well, will we just give these guys eighty-five thousand? And when I can get a work product out of it, well, it doesn't really work that way. We may be at fifty grand, Tommy. And we'll, we'll start negotiating on another project.
That's right.
Um, so you're saying the eighty thousand is a not to exceed eighty thousand?
Correct.
Okay, okay, yep.
Yep, just hourly not to exceed.
The reason I put it at that number was because I know that Mario wants to get through this and move, he doesn't want to let anything grow under his feet. He wants to get this thing done. But I don't want to have to come back again to avoid the works and get a second one approved. I don't know that we're going to need eighty thousand.
I don't think we will. I don't think it's a good time.
But that gives me enough in a not to exceed number to work hourly to identify the project. And then we, we come to it and it, it might happen. I, I would love for this not to happen, but it might happen that we find the project, we help get through the scoping. And Mario says, you know what, this is great.
I got it.
Everything, we don't, we don't need you for the rest of it. But, okay.
Well, I think.
Well, glad you have any just to make.
This streamlines a lot of this, this process and it's good.
And I get that.
Having you guys being, being part of that's good. I mean, we, you know, there's just so many wounds that we carry from, you know, the, of engaging in contracts like this. We don't have any benchmarks set, so we're like, what did we just get for our seventy-five thousand dollars we spent? You know, it's, it's just, you know, you gotta forgive us for our, for our.
No, that's.
I don't think it's a forgiving.
But we don't want to, we don't want to forget, we, we want to do things differently.
Well, the best thing that we can do is have a long memory and learn from the mistakes of prior administrations, from a mistake we made yesterday. You know, that's, that's our job, is to take, is to not ignore the event center, but look at it and understand why it was bad and make sure it never happens again. And that's, that's the benefit of us sitting here now. We have the hindsight of a lot of good things and a lot of bad things. We can do it better.
But let me, let me say something before, I want to clear it up since this is a public meeting. I don't think that the event center was a bad project. I think what, 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 what people, including myself, that weren't ultimately involved at that time, don't understand is how it got to be a fifty-eight million dollar project, honestly.
Right.
I, I think that's, that's the, that's the, the, the bad omen part, I, I think.
No, you're right, exactly, you're right.
You know, because I, I honestly, um, I, I was very vocal about it throughout my first campaign and such, but, um, it's here, it's, it's a benefit and, and it's an asset, absolutely, so. But, um, I, here's what I'd like to, I, I, number one, I want to thank, thank you guys for.
Yeah, thank you guys for having us.
And Gal for coming. Um, I think we, we need to digest, okay? And then let's, let's discuss going forward and, you know, if you, individually, if you have any questions, call me and, or you call them, you got the card.
Yeah.
Call them and, uh, and ask, and I, but, you know, I, my whole take on this is, and I, I, I know you guys share the same sentiment. I just don't want to keep kicking the can down the road on, on, on these projects. We all get it. I, I don't, you know, we, we may be able to get these six or so projects done and we may be caught up, so to speak. I don't know if we ever get caught up, but these, these particular projects have been projects that have been sitting out there. We've spent money on, like Mario said, and we need to get going. I get that. So.
And we can keep getting engineering, a different engineering done and stuff. I mean, it just goes around and it keeps costing us.
Yeah, hey, thank you. Thank you, sir.
So, appreciate it.
So, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. We got food? We got food.